So.
Still trying to get on, I don't know who want to start.
I, I, I think we should, Mike, I don't want to delay your time anymore, so I'm gonna have you start. I, I know that Paul will jump in when he can, but I don't want to sit here and take up too much of your time. Cause this is pretty cut and dry, matter of fact, material. And you know, if he has questions, we can certainly get them to you afterward. But why don't you go ahead and start?
Absolutely. Thank you. You're right on with that, it's um, pretty, I'm gonna go ahead and. I'm not gonna share my screen, that's disabled, um.
Do you want it?
I don't know.
We can give you a shared screen if you want.
If I, if I can, I, I was just gonna go through that executive summary document.
Sure, try it now.
We typically use. Yep, very good. So hopefully you can all see the executive summary, the financial executive summary now. Up there.
Yep.
So.
Yes.
Jumping, jumping right into it here on page one. Is, is a comparative balance sheet for the general fund comparing where the district ended twenty twenty one. Uh, back compared to twenty twenty. Um, and just a couple things to know on here, you know, everybody's gonna wanna ask you, how did the district do this year? And, and usually the, the, the main number we talk about there is this total. Total fund balance is an increase of about two point nine million dollars. The total fund balances of the district increased by two point nine million um, in the twenty twenty one year. Substantially, um, you know, you can see here the capital reserve. Uh, increased by two point five million dollars, so most of that increase was placed into the district's capital reserve. You know, it's a great reserve to utilize. It's uh, the, the voters, the residents of the district are still in charge of those funds. That's not something that the board can just um, tap into, to use for, for certain things. Um, once money goes into the capital reserve, there, there has to be a proposition that goes out to the voters of the district to, to utilize the funds, so. Um, really good place um, to put some money and it's a got, you know, it's up to four point two million dollar balance now. That'll be really useful the next time the district goes out for a proposition for a new capital project. Um, to have that seed money already on hand. Um, and of course, part of this um, is also uh, the, the vehicle reserve too, as included in these total numbers. So we'll see a little more detail on that in the next page. One other thing that I wanna point out on this page. If you see near the middle of the page here and the liabilities, there's a lot of that's other liabilities. That's got three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars this year. That was zero last year. That is really just a result of a new accounting standard that was implemented this year. Um, it's not a whole new class of liabilities that the district has. These are funds mainly related to some payroll withholdings items, um, you know, your employee retirement contributions. Uh, health and your health insurance contributions, things. Of that nature, uh, they used to be reported in the trust and agency fund. The new accounting standard this year moved those monies um, over to the general fund. So if you're kinda comparing the financial statements from last year, that's one difference that you'll see. Is that these funds were moved, um, not through any changes in the way anything's happening. Just strictly a new accounting standard that the, the district implemented or that was required to be implemented this year. So other than that, you know, a lot of the variances on, on the general fund are really just due to the timing of money coming into the district. Payments being made um, by the district. So, you know, that's a, a quick look at the general fund balance sheet comparative twenty one to twenty. On the next page, we've got a little more detail on the um, reserve activity that occurred this year. And I'd just like to, you know, commend the, the district, um, the board and the administration. This is really how the controllers office would say a school district should be operating. There, there are research, reserve funds on hand. There be lies to make purchases on an annual basis. Um, you can see on the bottom of the page that the district as part of the budgeting process does allocate some funds from those reserves. Um, and then uses them throughout the year, and then if there's a surplus at the end of the year. Monies will be sent back to, uh, or will be funded into reserves uh, based reserve plan that the district has in place. I do just wanna uh, mention on, on this page here, you will, um. If you compare to the financial statements that um, Bob had sent out, we did have one slight minor change. From those financial statements to, to this final one. Draft that was sent out had twenty thousand dollars more in unemployment reserve. And um, that really put the district's uh, root balance in the unemployment reserve in excess of uh, where the reserve plan was. Where the target balance is, so on this statement here, additional twenty thousand dollars. Um, is funded into the employee retirement reserve and it's uh, less than. And the unemployment is down that twenty thousand dollars, and that was just a little confusion um, on my part. Um, on the reserve funding that the board did at year end, so doesn't affect the expenses or the total equity or anything. It's just a little classification between the unemployment reserve and retirement contribution reserve. Moving on to the next page looks at the revenue side of the general fund budget. You'll see here, um, total variance, a positive variance of hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So this was a contributing factor in that um, year end increase in the, in the fund balance. Uh, the main, main factors here, uh, a couple of things, um, in twenty twenty. There was some uh, revenue, uh, the state was withholding at the end of the twenty twenty year. So those monies weren't recognized in twenty twenty. But once uh, we got a clearer picture and the state actually paid those monies during the twenty twenty one year. That increased the revenue that was received in the state aid line. Um, in addition to that is the federal aid that came in, um, essentially the state. Plugged part of their contribution to the district with CARES Act money that they received last year. And then um, in the miscellaneous revenue, you'll see a pretty big variance there, a hundred and eighty two thousand. You know, that it mostly represents the, the BOSI's refund due to the um, sudden closure in twenty twenty. Uh, most of the BOSI's that we see ended up with larger surpluses than they do some other years. So the, the district received a larger um, refund on that from, from BOSI's expenses in the twenty twenty year as well. And we move on to the. Yes, sir.
Yeah, sorry, I was late to the, to the party here because of computer issues.
Yeah.
Where are you? I have my draft and I can't seem to catch up with you.
I'm sorry, um. We, we are in, in the, a document that's titled financial executive summary. Do you have that document?
No, they don't, I mean, so you're, you're basically reading through a summary from the larger packet. So we don't have that, I mean, the numbers add up and it coincides with everything that's broken out. But you're going at it and you have a succinct form, we don't have the other document, the executive summary in front of us.
Oh, I'm sorry about that, can you see it on the screen?
We can see it on the screen and it's, the, the numbers coincide with um, the basic financial statement. You know, it's just, we don't have the executive summary in front of us.
I'm, I'm sorry about that.
Nope, you're okay.
Um, yeah, so the, the executive summary, it's a nice little six-page document compared to the sixty or sixty-five page. Full financial statements.
Right.
Makes it a little bit easier to get through in a meeting, um, hit on the key points without all, all of the extra. Accounting requirement and boilerplate footnote information. Um, so. Here on the expenditure side of budget, you'll see really where that surplus was generated. Three point seven uh, million dollar savings on the expense side of the budget, or I should say, um. You know, uh. Expenses coming in under budget, I, I was told earlier in a, a meeting earlier this week, I shouldn't call them savings because a lot of them were generated. Uh, due to, um, you know, it was a fluid school year. We weren't in person as much as we, you know, would have hoped to at a hundred percent, there were some of that in and out. Um, athletics didn't occur um, on a normal schedule like they did. Um, so a lot of those things generated some savings. And this is pretty consistent with what we're seeing across, you know, um, the Finger Lakes region, central New York with all the, with all the schools that we work with. You know, so that's really where we've, we've seen a lot of savings. Um, you benefits, the savings um, are up quite a bit this year. And again, we've seen that because of some of the costs that are being incurred. Uh, we didn't see really as much substitute costs, again athletics, you weren't paying coaches. Um, or at least not full, the full scale typically. Those also turn into savings on the benefit side because you're not paying retirement on those uh, expenses and, and social security and things like that. So.
Mike, the debt service, the, the dollar fee increase from one year to the next, can you speak to that? Is that just, you know, a, a budgeting practice to show a nominal fee, why is it only a dollar?
Oh, that variance?
Yeah, yep.
Uh, oh, I'm sorry, that's, that's actually probably just some rounding. You know, I'm sure with it, with a dollar, it probably came in. If there were some, some sense in there and it may just be the way that we input, you know, uh, the, the expense for the interest most likely. Cause principal payments are, are generally whole dollars.
Right, no, that makes perfect sense, I just wondered if it was, make, cause that service is pretty level.
Right.
Oh, and just wondered about the dollar itself, so thank you.
Yep, no, that's, I would, I would assume that that's just some rounding in there. So then we've got a quick look at the other operating funds of the district. You know, so the, the school lunch fund continued, this, this is, you know, two years of being pretty, pretty good operationally. You know, it's, it's an area before the pandemic, uh, we've seen a, a lot of uh, struggles with different districts and, and. Those financial statements or those financial operations for the school lunch fund to, to uh. Operate at a break even point or a surplus without, you know, transfers in from, from the general fund. Uh, district's done a great job of, of really uh, increasing participation. With the programs that are available during, during the pandemic, the New York state has received a lot of waivers. Um, as far as the way the food service is allowed to operate. And, and the reimbursement rates are, are a little bit higher for certain things than they have been in the past. But just to, to, you know, give you an idea, the total expenditures and, and corresponding revenues in the school lunch fund. Were up, um, you know, roughly forty percent year over year. Just due to the district serving that many more meals to, to the students. Which, you know, and I, I think is a really positive thing with getting, getting those meals out to, to the students and. Serving the community. Um, the miscellaneous special revenue fund. That you'll see next here, this is also a result of that same, a new accounting standard that was implemented. This year, so if you look back at your twenty twenty financial statements, you're not gonna miscellaneous special revenue fund. Um, this is new based on um, governmental accounting standards board statement number eighty-four. Essentially what it does, what it is, is it's the scholarship activity of the district has been taken out of the trust and agency fund. And now it shows up as a separate item in the financial statement. Um, that also did uh, result in a restatement in the financial statement, so as you're flipping through those. On the income statements, you'll see it says restated when it has the, the beginning balances. It's not, that doesn't mean that anything was incorrect last year or um, anything was omitted last year. It's just because there was a new accounting standard this year. Um, so we had to put that begin, the beginning balance of those scholarship accounts. Accounts into the beginning balances, so that was the reason for the restatement that you'll see. In there. Um, and then, you know, moving, moving along, debt service fund is straightforward. The, in, in combination with the capital fund, you'll see proceeds from obligations of twenty point eight million dollars. Uh, the district's kinda um. Wrapping up, you know, pretty, pretty good the way through the very big district-wide capital projects, so bonds were issued this year. Uh, it was a great time to, to be issuing. There was really significant premiums and, and low interest rates, so ultimately that's gonna help us save, save the district money. Um, in the long run on that capital project. Um, so, you know, I'm sure you're all well aware of the capital improvements and investments that are being made in the district, so I won't. Draw, you know, on, on that too long to keep, keep your day moving on, but. You can see that, you know, that turned around the fund balance here in the capital fund by issuing those bonds and funding that project. The last page here is what we call the, the entity-wide statement. This is a similar to a corporate-style financial statement. If we take all the operating funds of the district and add in the capital assets, the long-term liabilities. This is what it looks like, and the only number we really usually talk too much about on here is this unrestricted net position. District has a, a deficit unrestricted net position of about nine point nine million dollars. And that's just a result of the um, other post-employment benefits, the retiree health insurance. Uh, on an annual basis, the district has to have an actuary perform a calculation to determine that liability. Going all the way, you know, indefinitely into the future, um, and that results in the district recognizing a liability. You can see on the bottom of the page here of about thirteen point two million dollars. Um, and there's no legal authority to fund that liability in New York state, so that ultimately creates um, that deficit. Unrestricted net position. I will, I will say along those lines though, um, you know, thirteen point two million dollar liability for. But a district with a budget your size, um, the size of the district, it's about fifty percent of your annual um, budget. Oh no, it's, it's much less than that, so of thirty million, so um. You know, I don't have my calculator handy, but you're well below fifty percent of the annual budget. And I would say that, you know, proportionately, that puts the district in the lower end of the. Uh, the lower end of the spectrum when we, when we look at that liability compared to the other districts that we, that we see. So I think that, that just shows that the district's done a good job and. Through the negotiation process over the course of time and, and kinda controlling those abilities. It doesn't really affect the way you, that the district operates on an annual base budgets. Um, because through the budget process, you fund one year of those health insurance payments at a time. You don't really have to worry about having that thirteen million dollars. But eventually it's, it's possible that the, you know, the credit rating agencies could, could look at that and, and compare the districts to some others. Um, but I think the district's in a good position there. I need, I know that was very brief and Paul, I, I know you unfortunately had some technology issues at the beginning. Does anybody have any questions about the financial statements or the audit or the audit process or anything? Okay.
Mike. Mike, could you just summarize again the school lunch fund, I know we're in a positive, which is good. Uh, what was the effect of, um, I think I know the answer, but the effect of giving out lunches to the entire student body. Uh, during the COVID era?
Um.
Did the state make, did the state make uh, any kind of allowances for that?
Yeah, so what, what changed in the district was um, partially on a community eligibility program. Before the pandemic, so is that, I don't believe the high school was on that program before, but I.
I, I don't believe so either, you know, and I think, you know, now that it's a hundred percent. You know, so they, they do look at the reimbursement rate, John, and, and that's certainly something where we did increase participation. And we worked hard to make sure that the meals that were prepared were taken. Um, you know, so I think that's one of the reasons why we continue to maintain operations in the black. And that we didn't run into, you know, the red in terms of being in a deficit. Or go down as nearly as much as we thought initially we were going to. Because for our take-home meals, based on our hybrid model, you gotta remember those five-day prepackaged meals for the kids that were out. They were more costly than it was to prepare a meal and provide the meal in-house. But I think our numbers kind of, you know, supported that. Even providing a more expensive meal, everything paid off, you know, it's, it's kinda leveled itself off and we didn't go into the. Deficit or into a deficiency rather, like we initially thought we were because of the increased cost. Cause our labor costs didn't go down, our costs to prepare the meals went up and our participation went up. So it kinda leveled itself out.
Okay, good, good.
Yeah, and, and one of the um, through the, the waivers that New York state got um, from the federal. Um, child nutrition program uh, allowed um, for a higher reimbursement rates um, also and. Getting really kinda into the technical side that you probably don't need to be too interested in, but there's actually a change in the, the program. Um, at the federal level that the district operated, which further allowed for um, some more uh. Leeway in the way that those meals were provided. Um, so rather than having to, you know, serve meals from the cafeteria, the district was able to uh, serve from more locations and deliver meals. Um, that was another area where there was actually a. Some pretty significant new costs in the food service program related to uh, the delivery of meals. Um, was still able to be absorbed because the district was able to get such a high, uh, or just get such an increase in. Participation or the number of meals served. This year.
And did we get any uh, any aid for supplying all students with a computer and hotspots and? What is the, the state done for us in that regard?
Uh, um, I, I can't give you a direct answer to that question. Top of my head, um, I would say that pandemic-related, there was nothing specific that the state was doing. You know, for, for those things. Um, there, there were some other initiatives out there, schools bond act. Uh, prior to the pandemic that had some allowable, or that, you know, that would be an allowable use of those funds. Um, so that could be an area where they may have uh, provided some funding, but uh, for the, for the most part. Last year and, and the year before, or, or the year before, or twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. There wasn't really any program specifically for that, but moving forward. Um, with the new federal funding that's come in with the uh. The, the Carissa and the American Rescue Plan. Our potential areas in the next three to four years to continue those programs. Or if you're not, if the district's not fully there yet, um, that's an area where there's some funds that'll be available to. Uh, either upkeep or, you know, um. Uh, finish getting to that one-to-one ratio.
Yeah, we, we are using some of the smart schools and we did receive some grant funding. So Mike, Mike's correct, I mean, you're gonna see that in, in a variety of sources. You know, but we, it also got a grant for the hotspots, which typically we use Verizon. But Bridget wrote a grant and we received um, a pretty significant sum of money. Through AT&T to provide more hotspots. So between smart schools and the grants, you know, teachers are getting new laptops this year. We put out, I think, an additional forty hotspots, um, and then we are trying to capitalize on that smart schools money.
Thank you.
Mike, can we go back to that last document that you showed?
Yep. And um. And what we wanna look at on here?
Oh, no, it's not that one, I'm sorry, it was the one, it was sort of like the financial, I, it duplicates what I have in the draft is financial analysis of the school district as a whole. It was the one she was talking about for that, for that fund that was thirteen million.
Yep. What's it down here?
Well. Yeah, okay, well, thank you, uh, it's not. I'm not able to ask the question that I'm trying to because I can't reference it, I could try winging it, um. Uh, there's a line that says under assets.
Yep.
Current and other assets. And in the document I'm looking at, we, we went down two point six mil from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. And I was thinking that might be just standard depreciation, but then it, it wasn't capital assets, it was current and others, so I was wondering. Wh- wh- how did, why did we go down two point six million, do, do you know where I am on this?
I, I know where you are, you're in the, you're in the management's discussion and analysis, I. Yeah. Believe it probably says page seven on the, on the bottom. Um. I. So what? I can't say without having the, the actual twenty twenty financial statements. And well, and that would take me a few minutes to get to, um, but the current and other assets. Go, um, actually. I can pull up, um. Uh, share my screen here, so really, so this is just the general fund. You'll see here this assets, it's the cash and receivables um, and prepaid items of the district. That uh, really make up that current and other assets. We can see here the general fund was actually up three million dollars. This year in, in what I would call those current assets. So. I would. Guess that if we look at the capital projects fund. That the reason that there was such a decrease is there was probably a large amount of cash sitting in the capital fund last year. But that was spent towards the capital project this year. Uh, so the capital fund I would think had a large decrease in cash, uh, because of spending it on the capital project. That would decrease the current assets and essentially move them down into the. Actually, so that we're all on the same page here, so. Um, if you think about it and what I'm assuming, like I said, I don't have the twenty twenty financial statements in front of me to, to compare. But I would think that there was a large amount of cash in the capital fund in twenty twenty that's up here in current assets. And then that was spent on capital projects during twenty twenty-one. And then that was spent on capital projects during twenty twenty-one. And then, so essentially that asset moved from current assets down to capital assets. Does that make sense? What I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
It could, yeah, it could make sense.
Yeah, it, it could, um, because uh, if we look at oh, that's not gonna answer. Yeah, um, I can, I can look into that. I can send a follow-up message, um, to, uh, to, to Bob and have him follow up with you folks to, to verify that that's the case.
Mike, so it, the, the, the number I believe that we're looking at specifically, when you talk about that allotment, there is a huge portion that went from the capital project from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. So that very well could be the balance of that. I, Paul, did you say is like two point six million? Somewhere in that effect?
Yeah, two point six four five, yeah.
Yeah, I think that that is exactly what Mike was referencing. It is going to the cash that was sitting toward the capital project and it goes back to, um, a discussion that was last spring that we had. You know, when we looked at the budget years and the amounts, there was a significant jump from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen. Um, and then it did obviously creep into the twenty twenty fiscal year because it was put as part of the project as I was told. So I, I think that between your question and Mike's answer, that is, that is exactly where that was because that was something that was brought up, I believe, by you in the springtime, you and Jason had kind of referenced that money over the course of the, the fiscal year from twenty fourteen up to last year. And that was the answer I was given is the two point six was sitting in, um, the project. And that's where the, the money was moved from. Yep.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Yep.
Okay, um, I do just want to talk about the, the one other there, uh, document. I believe you received a document that said communicating internal control related matters identified in an audit.
Yep, they had that one, the, the three pager.
Yep, really short. I'm not going to spend too much time on it. Um, you know, we, we didn't identify any, uh, what we would consider findings this year. Um, or areas where we would recommend improvements in internal control. Um, if those of you who were on the audit committee last year, I know we, we talked about, um, uh, Bob thought we were gonna have a, a management letter without any comments and, and then changed it because the, the school lunch fund balance was in excess of three months operating expenditures in twenty twenty. Um, so that was in there last year. That's corrected this year. Um, and just to talk about, um, you know, we, we mentioned that the, the school lunch fund actually had an operating surplus. Do you think if we have more fund balance, wouldn't we still have that finding? But because there was such an increase in the expenditures and in the, the part, the meat number of meals served, that increased that the threshold for that three month fund balance comment. So even though there's more fund balance this year than there was last year, as a proportion of the expenditures, it's less this year. So, um, that's identified as a, a, a corrected item in the management letter here. Then we just have a couple informational items, um, that we want to just make sure that everybody's uh, aware of cyber, cyber risk is, is risk everywhere in today's world. I'm sure you see stories on the news and hear things. So just make sure that the district continues to monitor the network and uh, how computers are controlled and everything like that. Uh, and then a couple other smaller items. There is a new, um, accounting standard that'll be implemented in the twenty twenty-two year related to leases. Um, I don't know if it'll have much of an effect on North Rose Woolkit or not. Um, but we'll be, we'll be reaching out to the district in the, the next couple of months. Start put together lists of, of any items that the district leases to others or that the district leases, um, to use. And then start to gauge the effect of those items and how they'll affect the financial statements. Um, so that's really all I have for my presentation for, for you folks to take back to the board. And, um, otherwise, you know, thank you for the opportunity to serve you. And any last questions before I, before I go?
Yeah, the one there, so I'm on that same document that you are on page one and page two.
Yes.
Where you, so I'm, I'm, to document their cyber risk assessment process and writing that was on page one, not including the title page. And then, uh, we recommend the business office da, 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 into a procedure manual. So I'm referencing that and I want to go to my superintendent, Mike. Is that, do we already hit, do we already have a, a, a procedure manual and it just needs to be enhanced? Or do we need to make one? Or what's the deal there, Mike?
Well, we're in the process, so you'll remember John has referenced his time as administrator. He always had the administrative procedures book. So we are working on developing that with our administrators. The specific to, um, cybersecurity and, and controls, this is something that Lisa Brower and I started talking about last year. Um, because as Mike referenced, you'll know that the comptroller from New York State has been going in and auditing safeguards on schools specifically in the area of cybersecurity. So last year Victor had the incident, um, where they were hacked and, and several hospitals in the north country were hacked and they were looking for Bitcoin. We do have safeguards and we do have backup measures. Lisa Brower and I talked about that. We also talked about going through our internal processes to ensure that if the comptroller ever came in to look at our practices, that we were, um, adhering to the best practices and, uh, from her perspective, we are. Um, so that is something that we are referencing. We did relook at our, our, excuse me, I should say revisited our acceptable users policy. And we do have a professional development that all teachers and staff members have to follow. Um, when it comes down to ed law two D. And we're going to further enhance that when we hand out the new laptops to require that everybody goes through a specific training when it comes down to cybersecurity phishing and things of that nature. So that is in process. Um, and that is through our insurance company as well. It's a video series that they walk you through phishing and I can't remember all the other terms, but it's a, it's a suggested thing. But when we hand out their new hardware, they're going to have that become a requirement.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Any other questions for Mike? Mike, thank you very much for your time. Any other questions for me from the audit committee? And then are we gonna, Paul, you have one?
Yeah, is Mike still on?
He is.
Have a great, do you want me to go?
I got, if, if you could answer one question for me, I just want to make sure that this was right, the way I was reading it. I, I'm on my draft. I don't know, Mike, how do you get to that? So I guess you had it into the draft, a copy that we have. Okay, can you go to page four, please? This, this leading to an answer that you can answer. You know, I have two questions, but you can answer them all at one time. So under financial highlights, at the close of the fiscal year, plus the, okay, the total assets plus deferred outflows, what the district owes, exceeded its total liabilities plus deferred inflows, what the district owes, is that, is that correct terminology?
Uh, well, so it, what the district owns, um, exceeded what it owes?
Yeah, but they both say what the district owes and that I get, I got confused.
The first, the first one says owns.
Okay, that, that, uh, completely solves my issue. Thank you.
Yep.
And then that answers question number two. Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay.
Mike, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time. Have a great day, everybody.
You too.
You too.
Izetta, as the chair of the audit committee, are you gonna recommend that the audit, uh, committee move this forward for the board to accept the findings?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so we'll get Tina to put this on, um, the agenda for next week. And then we'll kind of move and allow for any discussion that needs to come up as part of the general board meeting, if that's okay.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions for us? Okay, all right. You guys have a great day.
Anytime we come out of an audit, we haven't got to fix something, it's a good day.
Well, we'll take it. Thank you all. Have a great day.
You too.
Thanks, bye-bye.